All right, it is 7:00 PM. I'm going to call this meeting to order of the Mayor and Board of Commissioners. Would you all rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Town Clerk, could I have the roll call, please?
Commissioner. Mayor Marion.
Here.
Vice Mayor Walker.
Here.
Commissioner Althunreth.
Here.
Commissioner Scully.
Here.
Commissioner Warnock.
Here.
Would you all bow your heads with me, please, for a prayer. One of my favorite verses is 2 Timothy 1:7, and it says, "For God did not give us the spirit of timity, but a spirit of power, of love, and of self-discipline." Heavenly Father, I pray that this board exercises that verse. I hope that we become a model of not only government in this town, but also in Cecil County. I pray that you will be with us through each decision that you make. I pray for our warriors overseas. You watch on the news some of the things going on with ISIS. I pray for the victims' families of September 11th with the upcoming September 11th terrorism attacks that happened in 2001. And I pray for all of the people that are overseas right now in war-torn areas that may be in trouble. I know in certain areas of the world, it is very hard to be an American citizen. I pray for those that may be in need and may feel that they have no one, and I pray that they feel comfort in you, Lord. And I pray this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. First thing on the agenda tonight is approval of minutes of the August 26, 2014 town meeting. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes from this meeting?
I move we approve the minutes.
I second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes. Thank you. We have no reportings of an executive session, and we are going to move into public presentations at this time. The first thing on our public presentations is 2014-08, which is the Benjamin Edward Little Larson Donate Life Month. For many of you that may not know, on social media, I announced on September 2nd that we were doing a month of organ donation. We are going to be doing things throughout the month of September to promote organ donation. I will show you this picture. This is Ben. Ben was 17 years old, and he was tragically killed on September 20th, 2011. Unfortunately, he was riding his motorcycle, and a motorist pulled out in front of him and killed him. Ben was an amazing person. From all accounts, from speaking with the majority of people that knew him at that time, he was just an amazing spirit. It's almost as if the Lord knew that he was going to go home way earlier than he should have. This proclamation is very personal to me because the year following his death, I became very close to the Larson family. I learned about Ben through pictures and videos and talking with some of his friends and getting to know them. And he was an amazing individual. One of the first memories that his mother shared with me was a photo of him playing with his siblings at what is now our Veterans Community Park. There used to be an old train set down there, and he was playing with his siblings there and absolutely loved it. What I hope to accomplish by doing this proclamation is something that Mrs. Larson shared with me, which is, do not leave it to your family to make the decision of donating your organs. Make that decision yourself. Be a hero like Ben and choose to donate life. There are over 3,000 people in the state of Maryland alone that are on the transplant list waiting for organ, cornea, and tissue donations at this time. So with that being said, I'm going to read in the record formally proclamation 2014-08, which is the Benjamin Edward Little Larson Donate Life Month. Whereas one of the most meaningful gifts that a human being can bestow upon another is the gift of life. And whereas more than 120,000 men, women, and children await lifesaving or life-enhancing organ transplants, of which over 3,000 reside in Maryland. And whereas the need for organ, eye, and tissue donation grows daily as a new patient is added to the national waitlist for an organ transplant every 11 minutes. And whereas the critical donor shortage remains a public health crisis as an average of 18 people die daily due to the lack of available organs. And whereas organ, eye, and tissue donation can provide families the comfort of knowing the gift of donated organs and tissue endows another person with renewed hope for a healthy life. And whereas donating life through organ, eye, and tissue donation is the ultimate act of generosity and kindness, we citizens of Cecil County can perform. And whereas 51,000 citizens of Cecil County have already registered their decision to give the gift of life. And whereas Donate Life is a nonprofit community service organization dedicated to the recovery of organs and tissues for transplant therapy. And whereas the town of Rising Sun supports Donate Life's saving mission. In honor of Benjamin Larson and all those who have made the decision to give the gift of life and to focus the attention on extreme need for organ, eye, and tissue donations to encourage all residents to take action and to sign up on Maryland's donor registry to discuss the miracle of transplantation as a family and to make a family commitment to organ, eye, and tissue donation. Now therefore, I Travis Marion, Mayor of the town of Rising Sun, do hereby proclaim September as Benjamin Edward Little Larson Donate Life Month. And we call upon our citizens to celebrate the significant positive impact that organ transplant has had on all of us. And witness therefore and on behalf of the Board of Commissioners of the town of Rising Sun, I here and to set my hand on the 2nd day of September, 2014. I wanted to add that all of our town staff, the Board of Commissioners themselves are wearing these green bands right now in honor of Ben and to support the mission of organ transplant. They are also wearing these lapels. The police department, all of our police officers are currently wearing lapels as well by order of Chief Peterson to promote Donate Life. The Executive Director of Donate Life, Marilyn, heard that we were doing this, and she sent me a huge box of promotional items for Donate Life, and she wished me well on the mission of getting people to sign up. So you can either sign up when you go to renew your license at the MVA, or you can also come downstairs to Town Hall, and we have a pamphlet down there that you can take with you and send in through the mail to donate your organs. I also wanted to add that on September 20th, which is the day that Ben died, right around there, we will have most of our streetlights turned green. We are doing that in honor of Ben and honor of Donate Life, Maryland's mission of organ transplant and donation. So be a hero and donate life. This is something that's very close to my heart. And think of the Larson family when you do it. So moving forward, we're going to move into business meeting items. The first business meeting item is Resolution 2014-05, which is the agricultural fee schedule, and that's Commissioner Althunreth.
Okay. Last meeting, we passed out this to all the Commissioners, and I hope everybody's had a chance to review it. Calvin went over it, and this was something that came up in planning and zoning, that within the town limits, we have the need for inspection fees and application fees for agricultural properties that are doing agricultural work within the town limits. So I'm going to read the bulk of this so that it's read into the minutes, and this will be a fee schedule amendment subsection titled E: Agricultural Zoning Reviews. Whereas the town located in Cecil County, Maryland, is a municipality organized and governed by Article 23A of the Annotated Code of Maryland. And whereas the town is proclaimed as a perpetual entity with the right to pass laws. And whereas the mayor and commissioners have recognized a gap in the town's fee schedule in relation to the required building permits and fees for construction of agricultural projects. And whereas the mayor and commissioners recognize that classifying an agricultural construction project as commercial or non-residential project does not accurately reflect the differences in plan, review, and inspection process between agricultural, commercial projects. And therefore, be it enacted and resolved, that the mayor and commissioners of the town of Rising Sun are modifying the town of Rising Sun fee schedule by creating a new subsection E titled Agricultural Zoning Reviews to the zoning compliance section and relabeling current sections E through F accordingly to be identified as Part 1 of this document, fee sections to be identified as Part 2 of this document below, with the purpose of establishing a fee to help cover the administrative and material fees associated with the plan, review, code compliance, and inspection of agricultural building projects in the town of Rising Sun, which shall read as follows. And I don't think we changed any of Section 1, so we can go right to Section 2 on this because this is the building fees permits.
Yes. E, we created a new subsection E. So everything underneath zoning compliance permits, that E is all new. Still on page 1.
Yeah. So everything under E down is new? So we'll read all that in.
Yeah.
Okay. Part 1, zoning compliance permits. Agricultural zoning reviews for all proposed occupancy use and work related to the construction or renovation of any agricultural use that is regulated by the town's zoning code to include the property must be legitimate farming operation as assessed as agricultural use per the property tax article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, Section 8-209. New constructions, additions, decks, porches, swimming pools, accessory structures and fences to include any associated utility work such as plumbing, mechanical, and electrical shall be $40. Renovations, alterations, standalone, electrical, plumbing, mechanical, exterior structure repairs, and replacement of patios, curb cuts, new driveways, and expansions, $20. Special note to this, the actual construction or renovation of any dwelling or business entity intended for occupancy by the general public that is located on the property shall be classified as residential and non-residential accordingly and subject to those fees as reflected in this fee schedule. Part 2, building permit fees. Fees include administrative processing, all required inspections unless noted herein and final approval. Agricultural work, this is part 2, number C. Any owner or authorized agent who intends to construct, enlarge, alter, repair, move, demolish, or change the occupancy of an agricultural use building or structure, or to erect, install, enlarge, alter, repair, remove, convert, or replace any electrical, gas, mechanical, or plumbing system in the agricultural use building, the installation of which is regulated by the State Building Code, or to cause any such work to be done, shall first make application to the building official, obtain the required permits, and pay the following fees associated therewithin. The property must be a legitimate farming operation as assessed by the agricultural use per the property tax article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, Section 8-209. Number 1, new constructions, additions, and accessory structures regulated by the building code to include barns, greenhouses, livestock shelters, milking parlors, silos, sheds, stables, etc., a $50 flat fee plus 15 cents per 10 square feet of new area above 350 square feet. Number 2, alterations, repairs, and renovations. A $20 flat fee plus 15 cents per 10 square feet of new area above 350 square feet. Plan review for the new construction, alterations, repairs, additions, and renovations. No fee up to 3,000 square feet. A $50 flat fee for above 3,000 square feet. B, $20 per cut sheet or change order review and approval. And final as-built plans, if required, no fee up to 3,000 square feet, $20 flat fee for 3,000 square feet and above. Number 4, plumbing. $30 for the first 5 fixtures plus $6 per every 5 fixtures thereafter, plus a $75 flat fee if more than 500 developed feet of interior wastewater drain piping is involved. Number 5, gas. $30 for the first 5 fixtures plus $6 per every 5 fixtures thereafter, plus a $75 flat fee if more than 500 developed feet of interior wastewater drain piping is involved. Mechanical. Letter A, a combination heating and cooling system, $40 for the first 2 combination heating and cooling systems, $10 every unit thereafter. Heating or cooling systems, $30 for the first 2 heating or cooling systems or combination thereof, $25 every unit thereafter. C, $75 flat fee if more than 300 developed feet of heating, cooling, supply, piping, or duct is any way involved. Electrical is a $30 flat fee. Number 8, plan reviews for plumbing and mechanical. Projects totaling between 2,000, 501, and $5,000 is $30 for each preliminary review, $20 for final as-built plans if needed. B, projects totaling between 5,001 and $8,000 is $60 for each preliminary review, $30 for final as-built plans if needed. Projects totaling over $8,000, $70 flat fee for each preliminary review, plus 25 cents for every $1,000 of additional cost above $8,000, with the cost not to exceed $500, and $20 for final as-built plans if needed. D, $20 per cut sheet or change order review and approval. Number 9, site plans. $50 for each preliminary review if needed, $100 for final as-built plans if needed. Number 10, third-party plan reviews and inspections. Any additional cost associated with third-party reviews paid for by the town or cost associated with engineering or special inspection cost paid for by the town shall be paid by the applicant to include a $40 administrative processing charge. Number 11, additional plan reviews. The first revision, there will be no charge. The second revision be 25% of the original cost. Third and all subsequent revisions, 50% of original cost. Additional inspections. A reinspection is included in the original inspection fee. The second reinspection, $30. Third and subsequent reinspections, $55. Technical service and preliminary walkthroughs will be $60 per hour. Expedited plan reviews at the applicant's request. The first hour is 100. Each additional hour or fraction thereof is $75. Now it therefore be it further resolved that the mayor and commissioners of the town of Rising Sun passed, approved, and adopted this resolution on the 9th day of September, 2014. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the Resolution 2014-05 for the amendment to our zoning code to include agricultural zoning reviews.
I second that.
Resolution 2014-05 has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Althunreth. I have a resolution here that I introduced at the last town meeting. I will try to read through this as quickly as I can. This is Resolution 2014-06. This is the Economic Development and Community Advisory Revitalization Committee. And what this basically is, is this is going to be the body that we use as rules and regulations for the committee that we are forming on economic development. So I will go ahead and read this into the record. Executive draft of the Economic Development and Community Advisory Revitalization Committee. Whereas the town of Rising Sun expresses the need for an advisory body to help implement the economic element and adopt an economic development strategy, an annual economic development report that supports the development of an environment conducive to sustainability, economic activity, business development, private sector investment, and whereas business and economic development can play a key role in providing a balanced economy for a local community. And whereas the town of Rising Sun has identified a critical need to increase its net revenue from diversified income sources while enhancing the town's distinct character and quality of life, retaining current businesses and industries while encouraging those uniquely compatible to locate and grow in the county, build the infrastructure to support a wide range of destination, recreation, tourism activities, and shopping options while capitalizing on our exceptional competitive advantages for fostering existing and emerging industry. And whereas the mayor of Rising Sun previously appointed Commissioner Dave Warnock and created the Economic Development Advisory Commission to provide input and advice to the Board of Commissioners on matters related to business, industry, and economic development on July 8th, 2014. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor of Rising Sun, the following committee rules. Section 1, Rising Sun Economic Development and Community Advisory Revitalization Committee. There is hereby created for the town of Rising Sun a standing advisory committee. Section 2, roles and responsibilities. The Economic Development and Community Advisory Revitalization Committee shall have the following responsibilities. Analyze socioeconomic benefits of varied economic development opportunities and present plans on how best to achieve the goal of creating prosperous and sustainable communities while maintaining our quality of life. Recommend ways to reform and improve the regulatory process related to business in order to foster the spirit of cooperation, understanding, and consensus between government and business, including a specific review of the general plan and continue with existing town regulations and procedures to eliminate contradictory, unneeded requirements and to narrow the scope of government to only those regulations that are necessary to make the common good and that do not usurp the right of the individual to make responsible and creative choices. Advise the Board of Commissioners and staff on matters related to economic development, attraction, retention, and expansion, entrepreneurial, business formation, and workforce development, while reviewing and researching economic development opportunities and obstacles, seeking ways to enhance the economic vitality of the town by diversifying economic activities. Identify and determine ways to support dynamic business sectors. Review and recommend business attraction incentives and collaborative marketing strategies that address both county-wide needs and district-specific needs. Perform the following activities. Identify constraints and incentives to economic development directive and incentives for business recruitment. Represent the town on business outreach visits to existing businesses. Sponsor and support collaborative business and economic outreach efforts on the importance of growing a sustainable economic base, economic development appropriate to the town of Rising Sun. Serve as a conduit for the business, community, and town government on economic development projects and issues. Work cooperatively with the Planning Commission and other county and community groups on economic issues of mutual interest. Identifying annually the top economic development priorities to focus on and to establish annual goals and objectives to reflect these priorities. Report quarterly to the town of Rising Sun concerning activities, achievements, and recommendations. Reports may be presented with greater frequency where the committee deems necessary. Section 3, membership. The Economic Development and Community Advisory Revitalization Committee shall be comprised of 10 members from the community institutions. Members shall be nominated after a letter of intent is retained. All members shall have relevant knowledge, experience, or expertise in key existing and emerging business clusters or related fields that support those key clusters such as business management, workforce development, recreation, and tourism development, or real estate development. Section 4, meetings. The committee shall meet quarterly or more often as the committee or Board of Commissioners deems necessary. Efforts shall be made to avoid unnecessary meetings. The committee shall establish a regular time and place of meetings. Special meetings of the committee shall be called at any time by the chairperson or majority of the members of the committee. The special meeting shall be noticed as required by law. Terms of office. The term of office for supervisor nominating, appointing members shall be for 3 years. All members shall serve at the pleasure of the Board of Commissioners. Section 6, automatic termination of appointment. The appointment of any committee member who has been absent from the 3 consecutive regular meetings without approval of the committee shall be automatically terminated. Section 7, appointment and vacancy. All appointments made to the committee shall be made by action of the mayor or Board of Commissioners. Section 8, officers of the committee. At the first meeting of the Community and Economic Development Advisory Committee, held after January 1st, which we will probably edit and Dave will probably do earlier than that, in each calendar year, the committee shall select one of its members as chairperson and one of its members as vice-chairperson, who shall hold office for 1 year and until the election of their successors. The chairperson shall be responsible for chairing committee meetings, calling special meetings, and conferring with staff on meeting agendas. In the event of the chairperson's absence, the vice-chairman shall assume the responsibilities of the chairperson. Compensation. There will be no compensation for this committee. Participation shall be on a strictly volunteer basis. I'm going to ask for a formal motion to approve the Economic Development and Community Advisory Revitalization Committee rules.
I so motion.
I second that.
It has been moved and seconded. The only source of this, does anyone have any discussion? Hearing none. The only thing I did want to add was, I did speak with Commissioner Warnock multiple times about what he thought would be the best moving forward, and we kind of formed this. I wrote it, and we kind of formed it together. And we are all very passionate with our 2 major infrastructure projects being water and sewer. I think all of us are on the same page that economic development is a strong third that we are working on hard. We are going to be forming this committee. They're going to be forming ideas that hopefully we will take advantage of. And I will be working with business owners regarding our historic district of town across the street very soon to set up a meeting and talk with them about what we can do to improve the appeal of their buildings aesthetically. So I'm going to ask, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes. Thank you very much. The next thing on the agenda is the Economic Development and Community Revitalization Study, and that is Commissioner Warnock.
So the, okay. So what we have here is a request for proposal for consultant services to create an economic development and community revitalization strategy. What we're looking to do is basically put a request that, we want to see what we can get back. At this point, we're not quite sure what we're going to get back. So we're going to start with an RFP and see what kind of proposals we get back, what, if we get any back, I'm hoping we do, but what kind of proposals we get back, what kind of ideas people come up with as to ways to revitalize the town, and what the, you know, basically some proposals from companies to see what they can come up with. And then we're just going to kind of move forward from there. I don't know exactly where we're going to go with this, but we'll, we want to at least put it out there and see what we can get. Calvin, do you think we need to read this whole, I mean, it's pretty thick.
Believe it or not, I think I actually read it when I was commissioner. We read it into the record at that time.
Okay.
I picked a certain meeting that we did that at.
Well, I think this is, yeah, it's been introduced before. There's been a few changes made to it.
This is only a first step anyways.
Yeah, this is strictly an RFP. This doesn't commit us to anything. We're not, you know, based on this, we're not going to go out and immediately write a check or something. So, you know, we'll, we'll see what we get out of it, and we'll go from there. So.
I mean, we can certainly put it on the website.
Right.
Can I ask for a formal motion to put this request for proposal out to bid?
Sure. Motion that we put the request for proposal out to bid?
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The next thing on the agenda is Commissioner Walker for the County Master Sewer and Water Plan Update.
The county is currently updating their master sewer and water plan, and they requested that the town provide them with our updated plan. That's what this is. You all got a copy of this at the last meeting to read over. I don't think it's necessary to read through this whole thing. Basically, it gives a report on our existing water and sewer systems and our proposed upgrades to those systems, upgrades to capacity and that sort of thing. What I'd like to do is have this board formally approve this to submit it to the county. I so move.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the changes to the Cecil County Master Sewer and Water Plan. Do I have any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes. Thank you, Commissioner Walker. I have a Town Hall sign-in sheet here for citizens' input. And actually, we have no speakers signed in. So I am going to ask again, would anyone like to speak tonight? That's actually the, I think, the 3rd meeting in a row. We've had no speakers. Okay. Moving forward, I'm going to move into the Mayor's Report. I have a few things to bring up on my Mayor's Report. The first thing is an update regarding our dog park. I am happy to announce that on September 7th-
I am happy to announce that on September 17th at 9:00 a.m., we will be doing an invitation-only tour of the park. We'll be doing a formal ribbon cutting there. We have invited people from the county to come down. We have invited a few state delegates to come, and we're going to formally dedicate the park. That following weekend, I will have a date for you as soon as possible. It could possibly be the 19th that we are going to be doing a opening for the general public. Commissioner Warnock is also working very hard on the trail system. He, believe it or not, took his own lawnmower down there and started mowing the paths for the trail system. It was actually very comical because he hit a bunch of reeds with his lawnmower and they exploded all over him. So he was very dirty after cleaning the park. But I'm very excited to see what him and the Eagle Scouts are going to bring as far as walking trails. I've had the opportunity to walk the trails there, as well as that veterans' community, and he is doing an excellent job in implementing that. There's only a few things left to finish at Triangle Dog Park. One is signage. I'm waiting from Alpha Branding to get back the signage that I need to place there for an entry sign, as well as a rule sign. And we have some concrete staining to finish, which will be done later this week. We did some heavy grading on the parking lot itself, and we also have been down there rolling it to make, make it nice and clean so that when water runoff happens, it actually runs into the areas that it's supposed to be. Some of the issues we've had down there have been because of grading and because of some nasty weather. So I'm very excited to introduce to you Triangle Dog Park on the 17th. I attended a, a new business opening with Commissioners Scully and Commissioner Warnock at Bottom of the Hill Grill and Bar. It is the former location of Uncle Willie's. The owners there have done a terrific job of rehabbing that building, of introducing a new menu. All of us that went really enjoyed ourselves. We spent some time there talking with the owners. We went and had some drinks there, and also they basically gave us a full meal, free of charge. I mean, it was very good. So I recommend you trying out that new business down there. They are very dedicated to making it successful. So I'm excited about that. The other thing that I wanted to add is that on October the 18th, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., we will be doing our Fall Spooktacular again. I'm very excited about this. We are going to have all kinds of activities for kids. We did do, last year we had, believe it or not, we had close to 400 people that attended, and it was October the 26th, is when we did it last year. This year, we're moving it up one week to October the 18th. We're going to have lots of activities for the kids, pumpkin painting, pony rides, moon bounces. I have asked Desiree Davis, who is, who did the Color Fun Run in the town of Rising Sun to emcee this event, and to also kind of take charge and organize volunteers. She has graciously agreed to do that for me. So she will be working alongside me and the town staff to make this event as popular as we can make it. So I'm very excited about that. The other thing that I wanted to add was, I do have, Commissioner Warnock is aware of two formal appointments that I want to make to the Economic Development and Community Advisory Revitalization Committee. I'm going to ask for a formal motion to approve Desiree Davis, who is a community leader, to be on this committee. Could I get a formal motion to do that?
I motion so.
I second.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
The next appointee is Amanda Cameron Vaughn. And Amanda is very well-known in this town. Her grandfather was Bob Cameron. He has been a, he was a community leader for a long period of time. Amanda told me that her grandfather constantly told her, you need to get involved in the town, you need to do things for the town. And she said as soon as he passed that she really wanted to be involved in one way or the other. So I would like to go ahead and put her name forward for a formal appointment to the Economic Development and Community Advisory Committee.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. It passes. I do not have anything else on my mayor's report right now. I do have a letter from the town attorney that I will read, probably under new business, I'm guessing. So we will move forward into staff reports. Chief Peterson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Board of Commissioners. During the two-week period of August 26th through September 9th, we responded to 232 calls for service. One notable case was just this past Monday, Sunday into Monday the 3rd into the 4th, we responded to the area of West Cherry Street, Wilson Avenue, Douglas Court, Cooper Avenue, Brown Town Lane, for unknown culprits entering unlocked vehicles and stealing change and personal property. It occurred during the overnight, and what we're doing is going back, looking at several different surveillance systems throughout town. One thing I would like to express to the citizens of the town is, if you see something during the overnight that does not look right to you, say something. We should be getting calls for suspicious activity during the overnight. We don't. I know most people are in bed, asleep, preparing for the next day. However, there are people that come home from work at varying hours that often see things that just don't seem right to themselves. So if you see something, say something. Give us a call. We'll respond and take a look. Second, I would also caution you all with leaving vehicles and doors unlocked. Society is changing. You can't do that much anymore because the opportunist will take advantage of it if they find it. So please lock your vehicles, lock your doors. That way, we won't have large incidents or mass number of incidents like this occurring. The next thing I would like to report is, we completed the grant for State Aid for Police Protection. It's an annual grant that's administered by the state, by the Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention. Last year, we got approximately $35,000. This year, I hope there's more that comes that will help supplement, you know, all of the funds that the town provide for police protection, and that has been completed. And that is pretty much my report. I have given some things to Commissioner Scully, and it's going to be her choosing to go over those tonight or not. All right? Any questions for me? Thank you all.
Thank you, Chief Peterson. Town Administrator, do you have a report tonight?
Just a couple exciting things to bring up. Number one, we do have a physical fitness facility moving in up on Colonial Way. They contacted us today that they're looking to do a soft opening on Monday. Mayor, if that's something that you could be available, or any of the elected body, when I find out the time, I'll let you know. Secondly, I can't, I can't give you all the details because it's not fair to the negotiation between the landlord and the potential tenant, but there does appear to be a national sporting goods store that is very close to opening up in the town of Rising Sun also. That's pretty exciting. They are a national chain, and they decided they want to come to the town of Rising Sun to open up. So that's always a good thing, too. The other thing is just to give the board members a heads up. As we're moving along with the sewer stuff and the financing, at the next meeting, we're probably going to be very busy with some resolutions and things that we need, that the board needs to consider as part of the financing. And I'm just going to say, I'll leave it at this. It's because it's tied to USDA money and all kinds of government regulatory things. There's certain hoops we have to jump through, the board has to formally jump through. So that's why we pay our bond council, and they have a draft resolution. There's a couple items that need to be tweaked, but at the next town meeting, you'll be busy on passing some things or considering some things for passage for the sewer plant. That's all I have.
Thank you, Town Administrator. Moving forward into the agenda, the Historical Preservation Commission, do you have a report tonight?
I just wanted to remind everybody of a few affairs that the Historic Preservation Commission is going to be holding. The affair for the 17th, that's the Amish farm, am I got the date right? That's sold out.
Wow.
Which I'm pleased with. The other trip is to, somebody help me, what's the name of that?
Mount Harmon.
Mount Harmon, thank you. We'll be going there at the end of the month, and that trip is, interest has, has been shown, but we have plenty of room for anybody that wants to go on to that one. That one's kind of open-ended and unlimited. It's open to the public as well as members of the Preservation Commission. There's a few affairs at the Oxford Historical Association, excuse my voice. I'm going to post this downstairs. Anybody interested? It's on the October 21st, that's a Tuesday, November 18th, that's a Tuesday. Anybody interested? They have some speakers, and they have a Nottingham Park and Serpentine Barron's history up at their facility. So if you're interested in that, check this notice downstairs. And with that, that's all I have.
Moving forward, do we have any old business tonight? I'm going to go ahead and read this update from the town attorney under old business. It says, "I want to take, take the opportunity to give you an update that the town was victorious in the pending lawsuit, Fisher Braun versus the town of Rising Sun. As you may recall, this lawsuit was filed on December 20th, 2012 by mayor, by former Mayor Fisher and Mr. Braun alleging that ordinance 2012-13, which codified the current administrative practices of the town, was invalid as it changed the charter and in the words of Mr. Fisher, took the powers of the mayor away. After almost six months of litigation and thousands of dollars of money spent on legal fees defending the town, the Cecil County Circuit Court ruled in the town's favor on May 1st, 2013. Unsatisfied with this result, on May 9th, 2013, Mr. Fisher and Mr. Braun filed an emotion to alter and amend the court's ruling. After more tax dollars were wasted in rehashing the same matter, the court on June 24th, 24th, 2013, again found in the town's favor. At that time, the town was hopeful that this matter was concluded and that the needless waste of tax dollars and distractions for the importance issues of the town were over. However, Mr. Fisher and Mr. Braun, the appeal it, that the appealed, appealed their loss to the Maryland Court of Special Appeals. After more of the town's money was spent in legal fees and litigation, this appeal on August, the, in legal fees and litigation, this appeals, on August 15th, 2014, the Court of Special Appeals, Maryland's second highest court, ruled again in favor of the town, the town's third victory on this matter. In its written opinion, the court indicated that the town had not violated any law or acted improperly in any manner, and in essence, that the claims made by Mr. Fisher that the mayor's powers were taken away were untrue. The court returned the matter to the Cecil County Court so that judgment could be entered into the matter and ordered Mr. Fisher and Mr. Braun to pay the cost for court, for, excuse me, to pay for the court costs of the appeal. Unfortunately, this does not include Mr. Fisher and Mr. Braun's reimbursing the town for the tens of thousands of Rising Sun taxpayers' dollars that they wasted by this frivolous lawsuit. I wish I could report to you that this has ended, that this has ended this matter. Unfortunately, three victories on the same subject is still not enough. Mr. Fisher and Mr. Braun ended to end their suit. On August 27th, 2014, Mr. Fisher and Mr. Braun filed yet again a motion for reconsideration with the Court of Special Appeals on this matter. Thus, the matter is not yet concluded, and the town will need to continue to waste taxpayers' dollars to defend this matter. We have every confidence that this motion will be decided in the town's favor, as the last three court rulings have been, and until that time, I cannot comment further on this matter. Jay Gallow." Wanted to read that into the record. I'm going to move forward to any new business. Do we have any new business tonight? Hearing none? Moving forward into Commissioner's comments, Commissioner Althanreath.
Unfortunately, I don't have much to report on the streets and sidewalks progress this week. We have, a lot of resources have been coming over to try to get the dog park and all squared away within the timeframe. I am having a meeting tomorrow with Public Works Director Ron Thomas, and we're going to discuss where we're at, what we're doing to prepare for the, the coming weather, what we can, what they have on schedule for street sidewalks and other repairs. So we're going to, we're going to have a quite lengthy meeting tomorrow, and it's a kind of a status meeting to see where we're at, where we're going, and what we'd like to do, and hopefully I can have a lot more information for the public next week. Do want to remind everybody that next Monday, the 15th, is the next meeting of the Planning and Zoning Board, and we still have some openings and looking for letters of intent to join our board. And that's all I have tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Althanreath. Commissioner Scully.
The report that I have is that, most importantly, Chief Peterson and I have been exploring the feasibility of obtaining body cameras for the police department. A body camera is similar to a GoPro-type camera that's used in many extreme sports. Camera is attached to the officer and gives the officer's perspective review as they respond to calls for service. Recently, there's been many incidents around the country that have drawn media attention and caused public outcry over police action. We'd like to be prepared to defend the actions of our officers and identify any areas of improvement. That said, in 2009, the police department deployed its first body camera, and during that deployment, several areas of officer training issues were identified, and I would leave that up to the chief to be able to expound on that more. During that deployment, large quantities of evidence were gathered. As a result, conviction rate for the officers improved. Since then, technology has improved tremendously. Costs associated with devices has dropped dramatically. The entire police department can be equipped for less than $2,000, and the overall maintenance of the program is being evaluated. The insurance carrier also approves and endorses this type of program and offers a 50% grants, grant to match for agencies looking to purchase these devices. And I just wanted to give the chief an opportunity to expound on that if there was any additional information.
Since I've been chief here, we've had two lawsuits filed against the police department, and those lawsuits took quite a bit of time to litigate. The town was exonerated in both cases. However, if the officers had the cameras with them, it would have taken a whole lot less time and probably would have never come about. I understand that at that point in time, the cost associated with, you know, a body camera or in-car camera was cost prohibitive for the town. But now that we have the opportunity to reduce those frivolous lawsuits in law enforcement, I think this is something that the town needs to look into. Also, when we had, look at the national picture of law enforcement, you have some agencies that recently have been in the spotlight. If the officer had a camera on him, they would not have as many questions. This is something that we need to look into, and I'm going to be examining, and I, I don't need any formal action tonight. It's just that I want to bring it to your attention and, and look for your opinions.
If, if I may? I think this is very important that our police officers have these devices and would hope that the town moves quickly toward buying these.
Yeah, I absolutely agree. I think it's definitely with some of the news coverage you've seen lately with some of the police-involved issues, I think that it's a need. I think that it's definitely a common sense matter to have something like this if it's available.
I think that it's a need. I think that it's definitely a common sense matter to have something like this if it's available. And it sounds like it's going to be pretty cost-effective, too, because of the insurance company covering up to 50%. That would be excellent.
I am not sure, and I'm recalling from the top of my head, but I'm not sure if this also reduces some of our premium by using it. I can also check with the legitimacy if that, it does.
Commissioner Scully, do you want to move forward with investigating this matter? And then possibly at the next meeting, we can do a formal motion once you get...
This was just an introduction, that it's something we're looking into. And then, yes, we can move forward with more details. The other thing I'll report on to the board and citizens is that I've also been looking into what I mentioned in last week's meeting about addiction-related information and that on domestic abuse. And really just spending the last two weeks gathering information that is available publicly through the government that we would, again, use on social media investigating how, I'm not a techie person, so how social media works to make this very, very low maintenance, learning that you can schedule the posts so that we can have them go out at certain times. There's also, and I would mention to particularly Commissioner Warnock, that there is the National Drug Facts Week, January 26th through February 1st of 2015, that there's a lot of activities that we could, that I would propose that we could do with the children of the community, both in-school and homeschooled and privately. So all of that will come together in a proposal that I will share with the chief and then share with the board as to how we'll move forward with that as a formal program.
That sounds excellent. Thank you, Commissioner Scully. Commissioner Walker.
I attended the sewer progress meeting this past Monday. I was impressed with the new contractor, the superintendent, and our engineer and how well they were working together to solve minor problems that came up. So I think that this is going to be a lot better and different than it was. I've also went over to the site a couple of times. I can tell you this about the superintendent. He's a down-to-business guy and is not a talker. So I'm optimistic.
Thank you, Commissioner Walker. And thank you for attending those meetings on behalf of the town and continuing to do hard work on our sewer issues. Commissioner Warnock.
So I have a few things to report on this week. As the mayor already alluded to, our trail network is starting to be developed. I'm still hacking up cattails from, they make quite a mess from the mower. But we have a six-foot-wide path through the cattails at the dog park for the Boy Scouts to start building a boardwalk. I've been starting to work with the Boy Scouts and we're in very early, like, design phases of what the boardwalk is going to be, the length of it, where exactly it's going to go through. We have a pretty good idea of that at this point. There's going to be an observation deck near the last pond in the stormwater ponds. So there's a lot of plants and wildlife and... Yeah, so it'll be, yeah, for environmental education. So the students could go down there and stand on the platform and learn about the ecosystem that's sprung up in that pond since they've built it. So those projects are starting this fall. They'll be, the boardwalk should be starting within the next few weeks, hopefully, and as well as the deck. I don't have an idea of when we're going to be completed with those, other than to say that they have to complete them before they turn 18 and they turn 18 next summer. So we got a pretty hard deadline there. Excuse me, that's over at the Triangle Park. Over at Veterans Community Park, we're also starting to look at a trail system. We have to have, basically, we have to have one trail built, I guess, by the end of, or we have to have something of a trail built by the end of September, maybe October, we can stretch it into. But we need to get really moving on that. So over the weekend, once I got done at the Triangle Park, I was over at Veterans Park. And I've cleared a bit of a trail back into there so that we can get our Boy Scout that's going to be building a bridge over at that park started. So it was an interesting weekend, to say the least. On the economic development front, in addition to the activities we've talked about tonight, I believe the next meeting, we're going to be introducing a resolution to form an arts council in the town of Rising Sun. We've been working with the Cecil County Arts Council and we're hoping to start an arts council here in Rising Sun that'll complement the activities of the Cecil County Arts Council. And hopefully, this, along with many other things that we're looking at, will start to bring people into the town and drive economic development. Additionally, this month is, it turns out, September is the official National Yoga Month. That's actually a national, a nationally-observed designation by the Department of Health and Human Services. So...
No, we're not doing yoga up here. It's impossible.
So anyway, the, if I can keep from looking up to have the people laughing in front of me, making me laugh. On September 19th and the 26th, we'll have yoga in the park. We have a certified yoga instructor. Commissioner Warnock? Yeah, no. Macedonia Garvin from, she actually is a yoga instructor at Sundance Studios. She's going to be providing two free yoga sessions from 6:15 to 7:15 at Veterans Community Park. Details will be coming out to follow as soon as I have, I should have some information this week. We'll be posting flyers. We'll try and get them up here in town hall and... Thanks, Lisa. I appreciate it. Trying to be serious here, no. But the, we'll be posting that on the Facebook page and... What else did I have? There was, one other thing is the... Is the elementary school, sorry. Rising Sun Elementary School, we may be looking to partner with as a, I forgot the, in all this, I forgot the name of the program. But basically, partner with the elementary school and possibly, if the commissioners and the mayor are interested, do some mentoring sessions at the elementary school. So I'll have more on that here shortly. And with that, that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Warnock. I did want to add on another note that myself and Commissioner Warnock spent some time going through trails this weekend. And he is definitely motivated about it. He's definitely passionate about it. Many people that are not originally from this area might not know that we had a railway run through the town of Rising Sun. It was very fascinating. We actually got in Commissioner Warnock's Jeep and followed a good portion of the railway and got out in certain areas and explored bridges that they had, trussel bridges that they had made at the time and different aspects of the railway. So both of us would like to see Cecil County potentially move forward with doing something with that railway as far as trails go. But as far as in the town of Rising Sun, not only are these the first steps towards building trails here in our parks, but to potentially build them on our railway also that goes through the center of town is the potential is there also. So I wanted to thank him for taking me to that and also for the poison ivy that I got on my legs. So thank you very much. Hearing any other business? Is there any other business before the board tonight?
Move we adjourn.
Hearing none. Motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.